We're on the record.
You're ready?
Number ready.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're here in City Council Chambers, three forty-five High Street in Hamilton. That's, uh, we do have one public here this evening. It involves amending our zoning ordinances, fees, policies, and some guidelines. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear. Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Muller.
Present.
We have the quorum.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Carla Fear for reasons known to City Council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Offering of prayer by Councilmember Eric Pullman is next, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We also ask you to watch over our police and fire departments, protect them so they, they can return safely every day to their homes and families. In your name, Lord, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with some very special, neat, special presentations, who out here works for the city? If you work for the city, raise your hand. Okay. So, all the folks who are watching TV Hamilton right now, folks who raised their hands are the reason why we're doing so well in our city. So, I just wanted to acknowledge all of you, then we'll get to the special presentations, which actually are next. So, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. City Clerk, you have City of Hamilton Public Service Awards right now.
That's correct, sir.
Gene, you want to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what's going on?
Yes, sir. I would be honored to do so. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, councilmen and women and Hamiltonian family. Thank you for being here this evening. My name is Jean Pope and I'm the Human Resources Director for the great city of Hamilton. Woo-hoo. This evening, we are going to honor six amazing individuals who represent the amazing values that we have here, the city of Hamilton. So, we have six values that we try to endeavor to be and elevate every year and every day. Our passion for Hamilton, owning the outcome of any project or item that we do, respect that is internally as well as externally, our sense of urgency, getting things done, innovation, creating new ways to do things better, more expeditiously, and inclusion, ensuring that there is a safe space, a welcoming space for everyone who is here at the city and enters the city. And these six people have elevated the definitions of these six values. Our first individual that we're going to be honoring is Ms. Sarah Silva. Ms. Silva, if you'd come on up to the front. The presentation will be available, of course, with our notes. Let me have you stand right here, please. Ms. Silva is an absolute gem when it comes to working with people. From the moment she walks through the door, she has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to ensuring that every customer feels valued and appreciated. Her warm, friendly demeanor is like a ray of sunshine. Everyone knows that to be true, don't we? Yes, we do. And it's impossible not to feel at ease when interacting her. We would like to honor Ms. Sarah Silva for embodying passion for Hamilton as this public service award winner today.
All sixty-three thousand people in our city should give this lady a group hug, like, right now. Because you walk past her wherever she's working, she smiles, she says hi, and she's getting the job done.
Yes, she is.
For those reasons, your passion for Hamilton is being rewarded tonight. And, we also have...
The real deal.
There's no, there's no money in here. But, it says, "Two thousand and twenty-three Public Service Awards. City of Hamilton, Ohio recognizes Sarah Silver for outstanding commitment to our core value of passion for Hamilton every day." And this, you are outstanding.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
You want to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you for this honor. I said yesterday, and just like a little public post to myself, but I'm like, have the greatest leadership team right now that is like pushing me to follow my heart and follow the things that are important to me, which my city is super duper important to me because I'm a Hamiltonian, born and raised here. So, all the things that are important to you and the struggles that you have, they're the same struggles that I have, and that's why they're important. So, thank you for this great honor, and I love my city. Thank you. Amazing. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, and who nominated you was Aaron Hufford. All right. Our next awardee is Mr. Dalton Markham. I know he didn't wear his sports jacket, but that's all right. No, I'm kidding. Come on up here, Dalton. I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Hudson to come on up here as well. We, we agreed to embarrass you thoroughly, so that's what we're doing, yeah. So, Dalton is up here because he exemplifies own the outcome. He cares about his projects from start to finish and sees them through without complaints. That's so important. He cares about the electric system and wants to make sure that it functions properly and correctly from the top down. The person who nominated you, Mr. Patrick Moore, said he would nominate you for this every year if he could. You're welcome. I'd like to give Bill Hudson the opportunity to say a few words.
I, I'd just like to say everything I've dumped on Dalton. He walks in the door, he's got a new job or another job, so he handles it all the time for me, and he does a good job. I just appreciate it very much.
I was mayor when this guy first came to town, I believe. You were an intern, weren't you? An intern. How many years?
I've been here my whole life.
Good. How long, how long have you been working for the city, then?
Eighteen.
Okay. Great guy, great. You fly the drones too, don't you, sometimes?
I do. I almost wore my flight team full load, but this is what we're asking.
And, trivia, he can really pick a great fantasy football league team. That is true.
That is true.
Thank you so much. You, you are well deserving of this award. You know, you started here as an intern, you stayed here, you're growing here. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And because of that, you get an award because you own the outcome.
Okay, I'll keep this short. Thank you to Patrick for nominating me. Thank you for all my coworkers here at the city of Hamilton. Obviously, I, I get the own the outcome, but there's multiple people in every single facet of project that I work on, different departments, different people within my same department. So, I'm just glad to be part of the city team, and everything I'm a part of is all part of the city team, so glad to be here.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I retire here, too.
Thank you, Dalton.
Well done, Dalton. Our next individual has been lauded as an amazing person ever since the day he was born, and that would be Mr. Austin Revilly. And he's being honored for exemplifying respect. Come on up, Mr. Revilly. And I'll ask Mr. Jim Williams to come up here as well. We could give Mr. Austin a great big round of applause. Austin loves Hamilton and working for customers here to make sure they are happy, always kind and pleasant to be around. He's a great person. He respects everyone he comes into contact with and is very compassionate and trustworthy. You were nominated by Mr. Cody Moore. And I'll have Mr. Williams, there you go.
Since Austin's been with us, what, about two years now?
A little over three.
Three, a little over three. Bottom line is, it's gone fast, and you're one of the better guys that I've got out there. So, I want to thank you for everything that you do every day, getting in the hole first and all the other things that I think really are important as far as respect internally as well as externally to our citizens. So, thank you.
And with that, the mayor will give you your amazing award.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for respecting all of our folks in our city and your fellow teammates with the city of, of Hamilton. Thank you, Austin. Congratulations.
I guess I'll give a special thank you to Cody Moore. He gives me a hard time, so I really am surprised he nominated me for an award. But, yeah, thanks for my coworkers and, oh, and thank, obviously, thanks to my mom.
Our next individual is from our municipal court system, and that's Mrs. Beth Gross. Ms. Gross, if you'd come on up, and she is exemplifying our sense of urgency. As the assignment, excuse me, as the Assignment Commissioner of Hamilton Municipal Court, Beth is primarily responsible for creating the docket and scheduling matters for the judge and the two magistrates of the Hamilton Municipal Court. Beth is quick to action when new charges arise and need to be investigated and added to the judge's docket. Due to her many years and dedication on the court, Beth has mastered the speed and agility needed to maintain an organized docket and workflow. You are respected by your peers, and you were nominated by Amy Morris, probation officer. So, thank you for exemplifying sense of urgency. You're welcome.
That's pretty cool.
Is Judge, I'm sorry, is Judge Gattamire here, though? If you'd come up, sir, and just say a few words. I'd tell you what, if I had glasses, right?
Thank you, though. Hey, you know, thank, I want to thank everybody. Beth does so much at the court. She's the Assignment Commissioner, but she's been a number of things over the year, and one of them is, has a lot to do with probation department. It's the same ki- um, kind of situation with Beth. She always just is really quick to get done what needs to be done, which, up at the court, a lot of times that means helping people that have serious needs that don't get addressed the way, maybe mental health needs or addiction issues, and she helps us get connected up with treatment. And, uh, she just does such an amazing and outstanding job. She is the best, the best up there. She does so great, so I'm really happy for you. And her family's here, too, so, you know, give them a big hand, too.
Thank you so much. Wait, 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 there's more.
Every lawyer in town appreciates Beth. What some of you may not know is, is, uh, Hamilton Municipal Court is the largest single judge municipal court in the entire state. Is that correct, Judge?
Yeah.
And maybe it could even be multi-states. So, you know, someone who handles cases and case management and dockets is handling a lot of cases. So, Beth, thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you for your sense of urgency and being a great teammate.
Would you like to say a few words?
No.
She's, she's too busy, got lots of stuff to thank the best. Our next, you're welcome. Thank you. Our next wonderful individual is someone who, you always know you get it right when the candidates went out and people flood you with, "Oh, my gosh, I'm so glad this person won. This is a great individual, blah, blah, blah." So, our, the next individual coming up is for exemplifies innovation, and that would be Mrs. Whitney Flume. We got it right, Whitney. Whitney always displays a sense of urgency and commitment to quality. We can always count on Whitney to help with any issues that may arise, whether it be researching misapplied utility payments, troubleshooting software issues, or implementing new features, services for our customers and residents. Some of the items that they placed on here were cashier, the cashiering function, kiosk implementation, kaienta. And the individual that nominated you is Ms. Christine Carr. So, thank you. So, Ms. Whitney Flume for innovation. Dave, would you come on up? Just one moment, sir. Dave. Mr. Jones?
So, I'd like to say, oh, oh, oh. I'd like to say congratulations to Whitney. She joins, you're welcome. She joined the finance department in January of two thousand and twelve as an accounting assistant. She is now our senior accountant. She does a wonderful job. She's friendly to all. I think everybody enjoys working with her, so, again, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have got a great finance department, and you're a great member of our finance department. And I've seen Whitney in various different positions, and she just learns quick, gets the job done, takes care of her fellow teammates, as well as our customers, our citizens in the city of Hamilton. So, Whitney, thank you very much for your innovation, and we heard about some great examples tonight. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I feel so honored, and thank you so much to Christine. I work with her a lot. I'll keep this short and sweet because I'm not a big fan of public speaking. But, it takes, it's not just one person who can make a change, well, it, it's not just one person who makes a change to a process. You got to really have everybody to, to do that. And I appreciate everybody that I'm always in contact with every day, all my coworkers, and I just appreciate everybody doing their best and, and helping to make good changes for everything. So, thank you.
And last but not least, for inclusion, this individual makes everyone feel welcome no matter where they are, and this is Mr. Wesley Davidson. Mr. Davidson, where are you? Come on down. Come on. Is, is Adam Helms anywhere near? I saw him earlier. Adam?
He's here.
Okay. Boot scootin' boogie on down here, sir. There you go. Come on. Shimmy sham on down here. There you go. All righty. Mr. Davidson, thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Wesley Davidson is outgoing and is always giving great ideas and advice to our members at Resident Services. He is a great guy. He is a great coworker. He works really hard and takes immense pride in his work. You were nominated by Tommy Hobson. Yes, you were. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'll keep this, uh, pretty short. I think Wes demonstrates inclusion on the daily. Wes is out in the neighborhoods doing our property maintenance code enforcement, and you run into all kinds of neighbors in the neighborhoods. And Wes treats every single case and every single individual like the individual that they are and according to their circumstances, and I think that's the best way you can exemplify inclusion. So, keep it up, Wes.
Thank you.
You've got a tough job, and you handle difficult situations very well. I'm sure it's a combination of intelligence and grace under pressure and, and just doing the right thing and handling the things the right way. Thank you, Wes, so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, I just want to say thank you to Tommy, first of all, in the back. Thank you so much. And the whole back row and everybody in Resident Services, thank you guys so much.
Very nice, very nice. That concludes our program, but I, I think we can all see that it takes all of us as a village to make Hamilton, city of Hamilton, a welcoming, healthy, happy home for us all. And so, I'm looking forward to delivering, uh, next year, so let's go out there and, I guess, be great, sir.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome, sir.
About a round of applause for Jean. That's all right. We're going to run with this.
Jeez. Now you know how I feel, sitting in the chair.
Payback's a better dish called.
It was Joshua's.
I'm sure it was. Okay. Next, we have our seatbelt program, and we'll wait a minute, maybe, for folks to congratulate each other outside, and that's our great city team. You saw a lot of representative that today. We're going through the... I'll get it later. Stand up taller, Michael. Go ahead, man. Sit taller than you are. I'm pretty relaxed right now. I heard it. I heard it. Okay. So... No, I will not switch chairs. Okay. Ready for seatbelt program? Christie Collins, Police Officer Christie Collins. Hey, go on down. What? Oh, and for the record, Councilmember Carla Fear came into the meeting at what time, Mr. City Clerk?
Six twelve PM, sir.
Thank you. All right. Tell us about this great program, Kristin, if you would.
All right, so the third grade seatbelt program is a program I, um... Thank you. I go to all of the schools in the month of March, and I talk to approximately eight hundred third graders about the importance of seatbelts. And I talk to them, I show a short, um, video, and then I do a demonstration, and I encourage all the third graders to do a poster. And the poster has to include a seatbelt slogan along with some artwork. And I pick up all the posters from all the schools, and then I, I pick one winner from each school. So, we're talking thirteen schools, one winner from each school, so thirteen winners out of eight hundred third graders. So, I narrow it down to thirteen winners. Out of the thirteen winners, I pick the top two winners, which I have here, as you can see. And then I pick a winner. Thank you very much. And I pick a slogan winner, and I take their slogan, and we make keychains. The police department makes keychains, and Sergeant Ungar Buehler is, the keychains actually came in today, perfect timing. And we put their slogan on a keychain, and we pass those out in the community to get the, the safety message out. So, that's a little bit about the program. And this was continued. Officer Bob Gentry taught the program for years, and when he passed away, this is just one of his programs that I continued.
Bring them on up. Winners, grand prize winners, and a lanyard winner.
There they are. Come on up, guys.
Okay. Let's start off with the grand prize winners. Don't be cheesy, buckling up is easy. Whose is that? All righty. Give us your first name.
Zoe.
Zoe. Great job, Zoe. Okay. What's the next one? Clickety-clack, don't leave no slack. Wear your belt, it's got your back. What's your name?
Harper.
And these are your two grand prize winners amongst all of those posters. They had a very nice celebration with Chester's Pizza, sponsored by First Financial Bank and others.
Yes, I forgot to mention that. We did have our sponsors, First Financial Bank. They give us money every year, and that money, we use for a pizza party. So, I, I tell the kids when I do the assembly, I'm like, "If you do a poster, if you win, you get to attend a pizza party with the chief, the mayor, um, police officers will be there, and we get a pizza party." And they're like, "Oh," they're all excited, and I said, "Plus, you win money." And they're like, "Wow, how much money? A million dollars?" No, it's not a million dollars, but it's a lot of money. You'll win some money, um, and you'll get, you'll get the pizza. So, um, that's pretty exciting. We're very, very, um, fortunate that First Financial Bank donates us this money every year.
And you see a lot of proud parents, proud grandparents, brothers, sisters, and we all learn, and it reminds us to be safer when we're in our cars. A round of applause for the two grand prize winners. We've also got a, a lanyard winner. Okay. And I want everybody to raise their right hand because she's going to swear us in on this, aren't you? Okay. What is, what is, what is your oath now?
I solemnly swear that I'll buckle my chair.
All right. And tell us your first name. These, these are your leaders of today because, you know what? They're teaching those their age and us older folks, and these three, and those who did awards before them, and Christie Collins, are saving lives. They're saving people from serious injury and saving lives. Vice Mayor Michael Ryan and Councilmember Carla Fear, we were there for that, for that great presentation where we heard who the grand prize winners were, and they're, all the, all the students were winners. They were all winners, but it's great to recognize these two grand prize winners and the lanyard winner. So, anything else you want to say?
Just great work. All the students did great work, and you guys did awesome.
Brian? Okay. About a round of applause for these great young ladies. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank all the parents for being here and, and taking all those great pictures of these educators. Did you lower it lower this time?
I was up there with you.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have Public Works Week proclamation presentation. Jim, who's doing this? Jim Williams and Dan Arthur?
Yes, sir.
Great.
I'm Jim Williams, Director of Public Works. This is Dan Arthur, my Assistant Director of Public Works, and together, uh, tonight, we're here to present the kickoff of the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week. Mr. Dan Arthur, please.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. I don't know how you follow all those awesome awards, but we'll try to keep it as, as almost exciting as that. They did a fantastic job, but anyways, we just want to talk about Public Works Week. It's, uh, moved this year, it shifted a little later, so it offered up some interesting challenges for us. Kim Preston worked tirelessly to contact all the schools, um, contact Kroger and Meyer to make sure we could still get it off. It's actually the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, and, um, the schools are, are finishing up about the eighteenth, so we were trying to, you know, not mess with their finals, not mess with, uh, with any issues with the closing, but, uh, we worked it out to where we can go in there, and, uh, we're at fifteen of the schools, and we're in there, we put in the barrels already on May first, so we could get them in there before the schools close, since the, uh, actual National Public Works Week is after they close. But we're in at the schools from May first through the eighteenth. We're still going to be at the Kroger locations like we have before, at the East Side Kroger for two days, and at the West Side Kroger for two days. We received a generous donation again from Meyer to kind of kick things off, to, uh, get it started right, and, uh, we're going to pick everything up, you know, the day after, uh, the day after Memorial Day weekend on that Tuesday. We're, we're picking them up in the school on the eighteenth. The first three years, Jim kicked this thing off in, in, in two thousand and nineteen, kind of before COVID, and had, had a really successful, awesome year. We didn't do it in two thousand and twenty, but we picked it back up again in two thousand and twenty-two. We held meetings with the new director at, at Serve City and... the new director at Serv City and talked things through with them. And they say it really, really helps out our community. They said that giving has been down quite a bit since COVID and this big food drive that we do, when we do the fill-the-truck food drive, really makes a difference at the pantry. So over the first three years of doing the program, we actually have raised over 10,000 pounds of delivered foods in those three years. And that's, you know, that's substantial. I mean, there's 2,000 pounds per ton, so that's five tons of food that have been delivered to the pantry and been given to our families in the community. Makes a huge difference. This year, we want to try to beat that. Last year, we got about 3,300 pounds, I think, this year. Let's try to hit 4,000. Really get the giving up, you know, get out there. We've got a promotional video that we try to get the word out on social media, let people know in the community they can give at our facility. We have cans here at the city building on the first floor and the third floor. For the first year, we'll be at the Community First Building as well and we're adding cans in there on Monday. So we just want to kind of get the word out so we can make this a large donation to Serv City. Daniel, if you show the video real please. We have a video. TV Hamilton helps us out every year to put these things together so we can kind of get the word out. They do an excellent job on that.
Fill this truck with food for our National Public Works Week.
We will be collecting non-perishable food items for donation to Serv City.
Our goal? Fill the largest dump truck in our fleet.
With your help, we can fill the stomachs and the spirits of the Hamiltonians who need it the most.
We are taking donations at several locations.
Look for our truck at the East Side Kroger, Monday and Wednesday, May 22nd and 24th.
There's Rev that was here tonight.
And at the West Side Kroger, Tuesday and Thursday, May 23rd and 25th.
Students are encouraged to donate at Hamilton City Schools, Baden High School, and our area Catholic schools as well.
You can also donate throughout the week at City Hall and at the City Garage on South Erie Boulevard.
And a special thank you to Meyer for their generous donation to get us started off right.
So come and join us in celebrating Public Works Week.
And help pave the way to reduce hunger in our city.
We'd like you... So do you have any questions?
Dan?
Yes.
I know that lately a lot of the agency's pantries or that are giving lists of things that benefit them the most. Do you have a list like that or can you have something like that so that we really know we're getting the things that they need the most?
Yep, we have a list of what the items... We went and met with them and said, hey, what is it that can help you guys the most? We don't want this to just be a weight thing. You know, what can we get you guys the most? And they gave us that list. We added that to all the bins that we have in the schools and at the city locations, as well as we put on the social media.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So I'd like to add one more, a couple more things. I am extremely proud of the Public Works team and the management team as well as all the personnel. Some of the things that you'll hear about this summer is pretty incredible. And I don't want to... I don't want to... I want to surprise you. So I just wanted to let you know, there's some national recognition coming to various departments within Public Works. So Mayor, I have something for you to read, sir, or do you have a copy as well?
Right here. It's not the same thing. You tell me. You know, tonight, we've heard about some of our public service award winners. You know, they're down in various holes in this city underneath streets. You saw some of the big equipment that they work with every day, whether it be paving or everything like that. But these folks also have big hearts and they give back to their community. I think I mean almost all your entire team and they're all involved in something that's positive for our city outside of their job. So they assist our citizens by day, but they're going to various meetings and joining organizations. So you build a great team, the two of you have, but they also seem to give outside of their jobs. So that's, those are great role models and because of that, what they do during the day, really all 24 hours a day if there's a situation. So these are some of the real heroes. Office of Mayor proclamation, whereas the mayor, city council, and city administration of the city of Hamilton, Ohio are honored to give recognition for the week of May 21st, 2023, in support of National Public Works Week. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Hamilton, Ohio. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees, and customer service professionals from Hamilton local government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation infrastructure, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in a public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Hamilton to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in Hamilton. Whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Weeks since 1960. The year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual Public, National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association as well. Therefore, I, Pat Muller, Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and Hamilton City Council members to hereby designate the week of May 21st, 2023 as National Public Works Week. In the city of Hamilton, Ohio, we urge all our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Hamilton governmental agencies to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life in Hamilton. Thank you, Public Works. And they do this 24 hours a day, 65 days a year. So your hands are full. Jim, I'm gonna give this to Dan, if that's all right?
That'd be great, sir.
Now, anything else you want to say, Jim?
I just want to also say, where's Rich Engel? Rich, you're a key part of our team in everything that you do from traffic safety to the major capital improvement projects. We couldn't do it without you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, I just, I'm so excited to be part of this team. It's very powerful. I was here one other time for my first tour of duty and I couldn't be more excited to be back. The difference that you see, the passion that they have, the safety is just number one and key here. And it wasn't quite like that when I was here back in 2010. They've just done a huge difference with how much they want to make sure everybody stays safe and goes home to their family at night, but do a good job that they're proud of. You know, we're all from around here and everybody wants to go home to their family safe and sound, but make a difference while you're there in the day. And it's phenomenal.
A round of applause for our Public Works professionals. Okay, our last special presentation about a very special 4th of July we're having this year. Troy Schwabel, Kathy Schwabel, Volunteers Extraordinaire.
Everybody's gone a lot calmer now. I'm Troy, this is Kathy. We're gonna have a quiet, little, little well-known event on the 4th. First of all, there's a lot of thank yous to go along with this. And the first group is sitting right here in front of us. All council and the mayor are volunteers on the 4th of July. I have had comments, Kathy and I have both had comments for some of our parade participants when they come. They're like, is that so-and-so on council? Yeah, you look around, our whole city council's here directing the parade participants into their assigned divisions and rows. And one individual was just absolutely floored that city council would be out here working on the 4th and was like, that's our city. That's all we do. So we have you covered this year, Mike, just so you know.
I'm gonna bring two cars this time.
I was all mosh and wax it this year.
Thank you. Mayor Muller introduces Kathy and I, but in reality, our job is transitory. Every so many years, you have a new volunteer set of co-chairs. The guy that's been here the longest is sitting right there. He is the presumptive chair of the committee always. Between Pat Muller and John Goduley, they are an incredible mentoring and leading force for us to keep going with. We've had incredible people in the past. Dave Ballou and Diane Evans were fantastic. Bob and Kit Wiley, just a whole group of people put this thing together. And then what we've tried to do is take their lead and go forward and we've tried to get everybody involved that we need to. John gives us the community foundation to have our meetings. We have Dan Bates is always there from the commercial point of view for the 4th of July. TV Hamilton's crews are there with Tiffany and Jeff Archibald and the mayor's always there. John Fisher from the police department is a fantastic liaison. We work quite well together and we have Jay Wertz, Deputy Chief Jay Wertz is fire prevention, and Trevor Snyder has always taken care of our fireworks. And then the guys, I'm gonna forget, it's Nate Noonan and I'm gonna forget his Scott, I can't forget Scott's last name, but from Public Works's sign shop. Hoover, yes, thank you. Provide us with signs, provide us with cones, and they're divvying things up all over town for everything that's going on. And then last but not least, the street sweeper crews. Last year, we reintroduced the equestrian groups and we had the street sweeper crews out there following the parade, which was fantastic. I mean, that made, it just tickled me to death that those guys were there. It was, we liked seeing our crews, they get some acknowledgement and accolades in the parade. But the parade, well, we got it back going a couple of years ago and we had some fun stuff going on. And then last year, I got a lot of people chirping in my ear saying, you know, the West Side never ever gets a parade. And they're right, they don't. I've marched in, one of the only parades has gone all the way across the bridge from Taft all the way to Garfield, and that was in 1976. And then the old antique car parade used to start over at the Plaza and drive all the way across. So a lot of thought went into it, a lot of counseling with Dan Bates, with John Goduley, with the mayor. And we posed the question to the guy that is gonna sign off on it, which is city manager and our public safety director. And they're like, we'll give you two years. If it doesn't work, you're out. And when I get ready to finish to get the parade started, Kathy actually manages the entire lineup at the parade starting. And I leave before they start because then if, no, if it falls apart, it's not my fault. I drive the parade. Yeah, I drive the parade route to make sure everything's ready to go. And I just had, I held my breath when I got to the monument. And I'm going over the bridge and when I crested the bridge, all of Main Street was completely full of people. I was so tickled to death that everybody liked having it go that way. I don't think some of the marchers liked to go on that way. I think the sheriff's backpack guys wanted me not to do that again, but you know, we bowed to the masses. So we have upstairs, up here on the screen right now, the theme from this year. Last year's theme was family. This year's theme is ice cream, baseball, apple pie, and the 4th of July, Hamilton, Ohio. And we have baseball here, I think, somebody said at one point in time, Lindemall baseball. I played Lindemall baseball. We have this guy, I think everybody kind of knows, Joe Nuxall. And I have a real dear friend, his son, Kim. And the Miracle League is gonna be in the parade again. The Challenger League is gonna be in the parade. We're still hoping to get West Side Little League and some of the other youth programs to be in the parade. But in addition to those, the Joes should be in the parade. We'll wait to see what their schedule is like. They are a professional baseball team. But we have a surprise this year. Cincinnati Reds mascots will be in the parade. And that's thanks to Mayor Muller. And that should be a lot of fun. And what we're trying to do is downtown, we are, Ms. Boyko from County Administration is trying her best to get us access to the gazebo, which is that elevated structure there on the corner of Second and High, where Dave Birchfield is our music director. He'll have the Hamilton Concert Band in there. And then we have Elena McCormick, who was a former band director for Baden. She has a group called the Queen City Sisters. And they are a Andrews Sisters group. And those two groups will be singing, you know, after the parade, before the parade, and after the parade. And we're gonna try to do the downtown like an old-fashioned ice cream social, where everybody is simply having fun. There's, that's the point of 4th of July. We're there to celebrate, we're there to have a good time. That'll be over by 2. Dan Bates and the downtown and Main Street business groups are working on who's going to be open on the 4th so that you can go do shopping. And then the beverage and food establishments are gonna work on who's gonna be open. They'll have games, they'll have things you have to do and get a prize going to all the different places. Anne Marie and Dave Ernst last year worked on that quite well. It was a really, really nice Jim Turner and a couple other people. And that worked out well. And then by the evening, coming up to 6 o'clock, Adam Helms takes over the show at River's Edge with, this year, I believe it is, that rock, I can't read it. Arena Rock Band. Yes, the Arena Rock Band will be there again. And then when they're done at 10 o'clock, we will have fireworks again at Veterans Park that you should be able to see from pretty much all of downtown Hamilton. And any questions?
Stay tuned for more surprises, I believe. When it gets closer to July 4th, Troy and Kathy will come back and update us and remind us. If anybody wants to get involved in some way, whether by being in the parade or as a volunteer for that day, who do they contact? Troy and Kathy?
Actually, if you simply go to our website, that gives you all the information. It's, this is tough, HamiltonJuly4th.org. That's it. Go to HamiltonJuly4th.org and you should be able to find everything you need there. Registration is there, contact information for helping out is also on there. We are in need of sponsors. Obviously, this isn't free and things cost money. And we are always in need of sponsors to help move things along.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That takes care of our special presentations. We go to Audience of Citizens. If individuals wish to speak, they may comment during this part of the agenda or they may reserve the right to speak when the item is up for vote on a council floor or caucus agenda, for example. All individuals who wish to address council are required to sign this blue public speaking book I have before me. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. I believe we have three people who want to wait for the caucus, Brad, Nicole, and Tyler. Is that correct? Okay. We have two people who are here to speak during Audience of Citizens. One is Jim Lotoman, another one is Tom Alvers. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Okay, well, first of all, there's two places on, one is on 4th Henry Street, near 4th Henry Street, there's a big sewer, not the sewer, it's hard right, five hundred, you see, blacktop around it, there's a big hole around it, right next to the blacktop, right next to the sewer dead. It says sewer on the line. It's a real big hole right there. There's also one over on G Street too, where I live at, you know, big sewer dead is right on the sewer dead, but not sewer dead itself. Not the sewer dead itself, a big chunk of that blacktop down there. I told Jim, Jim was...
Did we get those written down? I believe they're written down.
Was the second one G Street?
Second one's on G Street, G and George.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for your report and...
Well, I want to thank you. I got this letter in the mail. I'd like to present this to the council here. They're trying to, Dan Hancock, I want to, they're trying to tell me I should keep my mouth shut for complaining about the city parts, you know.
We have an audience of citizens. We'll continue to have an audience of citizens. We have an audience of citizens, we'll continue to have an audience of citizens. We'll address people's issues when they come to the podium, okay? I'm not even gonna.
I'm saying, well, God, the guts even present who they are. They should be kicked off the city, you know.
Rest assured, we're gonna have an audience of citizens and listen to our citizens, okay? All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, then. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you for writing down the locations of the Mr. City Manager, Mr. Public Works Director. Tom Alvers.
Yes, I'm Tom Alvers. I live at 56 Hermay Drive. We had a water main break about two weeks ago in front of 62 Hermay. And they had left a heck of a mess there in front of my gutter in the neighbor's house. When they pumped all that water and mud out, the mud is still there. Like, my neighbor asked me tonight, Jan Lanis, who's gonna clean up this mess?
Okay.
So, that, and they need to patch, redo the, where they dug the water line up twice.
All right. Okay, 62 Hermay.
Yeah, it's front of 62 Hermay.
Mr. Williams can take a look at that for us?
Yes, sir, we'll take a look at that.
And then the dirt's in front of 50 and 56 Hermay.
Okay.
In the gutter, where they pumped it out.
The work was done and what was left will be looked at.
Okay.
So, rest assured, it'll be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
And Mayor, could you please check the public hearing, the speaking book? There may be somebody named Summer who may have signed the wrong book. She would like to speak during Audience of Citizens.
You are correct. There's Summer Schaefer here. Come on up to the podium. You're here to address some bike issues?
Yes.
Great, great, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Hi, my name's Summer Schaefer. Thanks for everything that you guys do. I know it's a lot of work to take time out of your schedules. And at the end of the day, I sure know, I've been developing basically a brand for the city of Hamilton, BuzzRides Bicycle Rental Company. I'm the owner of the LLC. It has been presented since August, the start of this business. And I've been working with several nonprofits for Hamilton, 17 Strong, Healthy Hamilton Coalition, and Go Green Hamilton, which I now sit on the committee with. And, you know, basically, I've developed this brand for Hamilton. And upon getting my proposals and everything, I am now not allowed to be on public property. I don't know if this was addressed to you folks, as far as my proposals goes. And I just, I, I'm basically here presenting to you to get on public record the reasoning of why BuzzRides couldn't be accommodated on public property no longer. And, and also the issue with 20 High Street, I wasn't able to store my scooters, which I was utilizing that space in the meantime, until the approvals went through for the bicycle rental company. And then I was, I was told I couldn't repair or keep those scooters there in the meantime. So then obviously, I was forced out of that lease at 20 High Street, 111, Suite 111. So, in the meantime, I'm doing what I need to do to get this business going. And then on Friday, I get together and get my email to submit a description, pictures of all my sites, of where these bike racks are gonna go. And then Monday, I get this email that, you know, although you guys are in support of the projects, I can't be on public property and I could be on private property. And then there's also the issue of the bike racks. I wanted to just get clarification on the new, in section 1600, 1610 and 1611, on the bike racks being on commercial property. Since I can put bike racks on private property, I just wanted some clarification as did that new legislature that's gonna get read in tonight. But, you know, I guess I just, again, want on public record if there's any reasoning why I can't be accommodated and if there's any way that BuzzRides can fix it to accommodate the city of Hamilton, since this brand has been built for them, for you guys.
Do you have some kind of report on that?
Yeah, I can.
What is, what is a BuzzRide?
So, council, I'm not even aware of what BuzzRide is. Can you just tell council and myself just very short, quickly, what a BuzzRide is?
Well, it's a bicycle rental company. I'm actually currently operating a fleet of bird scooters out of Oxford. I'm the only provider there currently. And upon this venture, I was to come to, like, the Parks Department and develop a contract to put those bicycle racks with bicycles with the locking.
Are they motorized bicycles or just regular bicycles?
Play bicycles, yeah. I actually have a description and everything in my, a hard copy of my presentation right here that shows the racks and the locks go on the bike themselves. So, it wouldn't be a free for all. You could rent and stop and start your rides at that location. And there's a multitude of options and stuff with the platform that's BuzzRides platform, branded platform. And, you know, and I even reached out to Kettering Health and got sponsorship and, you know. Yeah, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So, Mayor, just Mayor, I don't have any background information on BuzzRide. So maybe what I'll do is sit down with our zoning department, see what the issues are, and we'll prepare maybe a written report for council on this topic.
That'd be, that'd be good, that'd be very good for us.
Okay.
We'll learn a bit more about it.
Okay. Should I just contact, you guys contact me or?
Liz, do you, do you have her contact information? Yeah, I'll work with Liz and, yeah, we'll have a conversation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Right, thank you.
I appreciate you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak today.
Okay, I think that takes care of all the Audience of Citizens. But there'll be some speakers during our caucus agenda. All right. We now go to consent agenda, that is all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and informational reports. And we're gonna go in the committee of the whole, so that we may ask questions and comment on some of the reports that are gonna be presented to us. Now, set the motion to regular meeting, be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second, motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And the time is 7:02. Okay.
So for our four presentations this evening, the first presentation will be by our planning director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council, residents of Hamilton. Tonight I'm discussing a proposed grant application that engineering and planning is working on to complete the sidewalk network on Main Street and Northwest Washington. It's a big project and it requires a 20% match. So we wanted to make sure we presented on this before it was submitted. It's a grant, a grant request to OKI for their transportation alternatives program. And this project of sidewalks in this area on Main Street and Northwest Washington was identified as one of the top five projects in our active transportation plan that was created in 2020. So this shows you the proposed sidewalks on Main Street. And then here is the proposed sidewalks on Northwest Washington. And if this project were to be completed, it would complete 3.4 miles of sidewalk on Main Street from Northwest Washington all the way to Route 4. And it would also establish 2.7 miles of continuous sidewalk on Northwest Washington. So it's kind of that final gap of sidewalk and it's right in a really busy commercial corridor. So the project is, the grant application, that we're still working on finalizing the exact amount, but we expect it to be approximately a $1.1 million project. And the city's contribution would be approximately $330,000. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. So Liz referenced the, our active transportation plan. Just for the audience that may be watching on TV Hamilton, you can access that plan from the city website. If I recall correctly, all are sort of comprehensive plan, our active transportation plan, our riverfront master plan are all linked to our website. So if people have interest when they hear things like that, I believe, I just went to the website. I think it's under, if you go to info, which is on the top of our webpage, and drop down to master plan, it'll take you to a planning link that will bring you to all those plans. Just FYI.
Mayor. Senator Nablis, we've heard over the years from residents and people that are here in audience with us tonight about the gaps that you've just shared with us in the sidewalks between, especially between Brookwood and the corner of Northwest Washington, and then Northwest Washington down to approximately where the new shooters might be. So thank you for doing this and listening. As Jacquet just shared, it's in our master plan. If this all falls into step, when might this take place?
I believe it would be four years from now. I believe that's the timeline, that it would be done, three or four years.
Okay, but thanks for sharing. At least we're in process.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thanks for bringing this forward to us.
For agenda items number two and three, I'll be presenting those items. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Agenda items two and three are liquor permits. For a quick review with council on why these come to council's attention, these are permit applications which typically are either a new permit or a transfer between different permit owners. Our revised code allows legislative authorities such as city council to have the authority or the right to object to these permits, typically with, through either our building, health, or fire departments. Staff has reviewed both of these permits and we recommend no objections at this point. The first one is for the Main Circuit, it's at 429 Main Street. This is a D5J permit. A D5J specifically is a full-service liquor license for beer, wine, liquor, and other intoxicating liquors. But this is specifically within our community entertainment districts. And number three, this is a new liquor permit for 610 Central Avenue. This is a D1 and D3 permit, meaning a D1 is specifically only for beer to be consumed on the premises. And a D3, that deals with the hours in which they will be open, which is till 1 o'clock in the morning. Do we have any questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So with item number three, does this mean you cannot take it outside? That's not a Dora district. So, is this a restaurant? I'm talking about the quesadilla?
Yeah, I'm not as too familiar with the business itself. My guess by the name, it would be more of a restaurant. But I believe this is not located within our Dora, so they would not be able to take this, take these beverages outside the premises.
Okay, it's a very small building there, so it just doesn't look like a restaurant to me. So I just wanted to clarify, if it's going to have alcohol, it's not going to be outdoors.
Yeah, and for future reports, I can try to get more information about the business itself. That way, we can be more informed on what's actually going into these spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, if I may, Mallory is our in-house expert. Mallory, can you provide some context to that question, please?
It is not within our Dora, just, no, they wouldn't be able to take it outside. They'll stay out of the patio, though they could stand in a part of the performance. It may be with the part of the parking lot, but it wouldn't be there yet. But no Dora.
No Dora, great, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Then next up for agenda item number four, our assistant to the city manager, Ms. Mallory Greenham.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm also your newly promoted photographer, if you didn't know. It's a new position I hold, so.
We noticed.
Yeah. So I'm here to talk about the Sunday Liquor Sale Ballot Initiative that's on the caucus agenda tonight. And I'll do my best. It is a complicated topic, so feel free to ask questions, but I'm gonna try to summarize in a short amount of time. So, we have downtown, we have two community entertainment districts. Pretty much, if you're serving on Sunday in those areas, which I'll just flip over to this map, it's because you've gotten, you've petitioned through a local option or that address has been, already gone through the process of making it wet, which means you can serve on Sunday. And I know that in our office, and especially when I was doing small business development even more, I got a lot of questions about why some restaurants aren't open on Sundays. One of the main reasons is that a lot of them do not have the D6 permit, which permits them to sell on Sunday because they are considered dry. So how do you not, how do you go from dry to wet? Well, it is actually a very complicated process that we call the local option route. And to summarize it, what a business has to do, either by their address or by the precinct that they're in, is work with the Butler County Board of Elections. They have to pull all of the tax, not the tax, the voter registrations, people who are registered to vote in that precinct. Then they have to go door to door and get signatures from registered voters. The amount kind of depends on how big the precinct is. Then they have to submit that to the Board of Elections. Those have to be verified. There have been times where they have come back invalid and people have tried to do this and it never even made it to the ballot. So it is a cumbersome process. So say that that business or that precinct makes it through, gets the signatures on, gets it on the ballot. Now they have to run a campaign, like vote for issue two. They have to make flyers, they have to go out on Election Day. And they have to do all this, and sometimes we're talking about a restaurant that has two people. So you can imagine why many of our businesses have not found the time or the resources to make this happen, or they've attempted and they've been unsuccessful. So again, there's a couple ways you can do it, by address or by precinct. We actually have five precincts over our downtown district, so that's a lot. Usually a downtown urban core has one, maybe two. We have five just because of the nature of it. And so what this caucus agenda item is asking council to consider is to approve passing by the petition, the signing process, and just saying, as a council, we would like to see this on the November ballot for Hamiltonians to vote on. And it wouldn't be the people in the precincts voting on it, it would be all Hamiltonians who'd be voting on, if they would like to see Sunday liquor sales for those individuals who already have liquor permits in our two community entertainment districts. And we have two, it's, the red line separates them, it's actually B Street that separates them. Mill One is the Main Street side, Mill Two is German Village, Central Business District, Heaton, Maple Avenue, and East High Street. So it's quite large. That also mimics our Dora district, which I threw in the slide because people do get confused. So our community entertainment districts brought additional D5J liquor licenses. You just heard somebody use one. So they're liquor licenses that can only be used in those districts. We created them, we have 15 on each side, a lot of them have been used. The Dora district allows consumption of alcohol off premises, so just two completely different things. So again, I'm trying to keep this short. So what you would be voting on to approve is not that we're passing Sunday sales. Hamiltonians have to vote on that in November. You're just saying we don't require businesses or precincts to go around and get all the signatures to put it on the ballot. And so why is this important? I know that the Hamilton Area Hospitality Group and several businesses signed the group, and I think it's best to hear from small businesses why we think it's important. But before I step away, do you have any kind of specific questions for me about it?
Any questions at this point in time? Mr. Mayor. Governor Pullman.
Mallory, so if we do this in the future for other businesses that are outside of Dora District or anybody else that comes up, can, will we have to do the same thing for them or?
The only way that we could do this again is if we created another community entertainment district, which can be done with a minimum of a $50 million investment in a project. So say, you know, say Lenhamall gets $50 million in investment, we can create a community entertainment district. Dora District, separate, we can also layer a Dora District over it. But then we could go through this process where we skip the petition signing and put it. But we can only do that if we have a community entertainment district. Otherwise, the precinct or the business address has to do the local option route.
Okay, that's a good explanation, in case somebody comes up and asks you, well, why did they get to do that? You know, that's.
It's only available in the community entertainment district.
And that's, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
And I do want to thank our law department for that. I mean, it was like a one line in the easy 33-page quick guide to local options that a community entertainment, a municipality could even do this. I really don't think it's common knowledge, so thank you, Law Department, for all your work on this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Revon.
So Mallory, so the state says, this is okay, we can do this. I had a conversation with our State Representative Cruthers about this not long ago. And I know last. and I know last year there was something at the state level that if you had a liquor license, then you would have the ability to have Sunday sales, but that disappeared. And that didn't happen. So, this will include Main Street, correct? Any business who wants to do this in that district?
So, they have to have a liquor license. They have to have a D-1, D-5. Then, once you have a liquor license already, you can add on a D-6. It's like $500. But what happens is someone goes to apply for a D-6. It gets sent to the Board of Elections and said, this is dry on Sunday, and they just reject it. So, now they can, they can add it on. Is it add-on?
Add a cost.
Yes.
They will add it on. It's not an automatic.
And this, I believe the state knows that this is an issue for our small businesses, and they were working to eliminate this whole process, and it got pulled from something last minute for reasons I don't quite understand, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Okay, do we have some folks who want to comment about why this is important to them? I've got Brad, Nicole, or Tyler wish to speak at this time. Give us your name, your address, please.
Yes, my name is Brad Reed. I'm at 110 South Washington. And I just wanted to say a couple words. We do have a business that we are planning on opening here this year down off South B Street, which lies in that same community, the entertainment district. And Nicole and I are owners of what's called Nick and Norm's Sidecar Bar. We are in the middle of adding on to a house and making a bar out of it. Small businesses. We also own a small business on Millville, another bar, Nick and Norm's Tavern. A lot of you have been in before. And we are not able to sell alcohol there. That's another issue. It's a totally different issue than what we're talking about here, simply because we're not in the entertainment district up there, which we are going through the petition and also trying to get that Sunday sales also. And working that out, it does come to quite a return, a big return for Sundays. I mean, I've estimated it's quite a large chunk of money for sales, if we did have that opportunity to have those Sunday sales. You know, depending on what you're doing on Sundays, and I know we have a lot of sports in the area, and a lot of different people like to go watch the sports on Sundays. Most importantly, like she was saying earlier about the, it's a convoluted way to try to get that done. It's a very difficult thing. We've been working on it since August at our other location, and I think it would be a great addition to, you know, the area, whether it's bringing new jobs, bringing in, because we would need more bartenders, more people for our kitchen. And I think that it would, it would just be a great way to, you know, add value to coming out in Hamilton near. It's another destination. How many people want to go? I don't want people to have to go outside of Hamilton when we could have them here in Hamilton, spending money and being happy. And, you know, I know that we have a hard time finding places on Sundays to go because a lot of the businesses are closed, restaurants and things. So, I think it would revitalize a lot of area, mainly on Main Street and on High Street, if we did have some opportunity to, you know, have that liquor sales and beer sales. So, I'll have, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Tyler.
Hi, guys. Good to see you all. So, I agree with what Brad said. We do have our D-6 license, so we're really fortunate to be able to sell liquor on Sundays. What I want to speak on is just how impactful that is for our business. We were closed for Sundays for most of last year and after the pandemic, and that was a lot of staffing issues, right? But what Sunday's become, especially with the spooky nook crowds, has become our third busiest day after Friday and Saturday. And we do about 20% alcohol, liquor in particular, and it's also the highest margin we have. So, having, being able to sell liquor on Sundays has been a complete game changer. Like Brad talked about, and also, we've hired more people. We've increased our staff, both front of house and back of house. I mean, the last two months, we brought on at least eight more people, which is significant for our business. You know what I mean? And also, you know, having the bartenders, we're really big on our craft cocktails, so it lets us teach and, you know, show these people another skill, so that can be hopefully helpful long-term. But it's a big deal. And I don't honestly remember the whole process from the opening with getting the D-6. That was all on Tono. So, and I don't know how I pulled that off. I don't know exactly what it was. It's a long time ago. But I can tell you, the amount of tasks it took to get our restaurant open was massive. And you're talking about a year-plus planning. And to add that kind of process to it, when you have to go, you know, get signatures and everything, finding the time along with everything else, it's just, it's rough, you know? And one of the biggest things, we have our Haha Crew here in Hamilton, which is big. It's a big deal. It's a lot of fun. And just great people. I mean, everybody talks about, you know, staffing is a big problem, but also just finding time to get things done. And so, if anybody wants to have this and it's a bit, you know, add to their business, to find the time to do all these different things, jump through the hoops. I just, if we can get, you know, if we can bypass that, I think it'd be a huge impact for everybody, both currently, who doesn't have it and coming. I know there's a lot of great businesses coming to Hamilton. If we can help them out in any kind of way, I think we should, so.
Thank you.
Very well.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other question. Maybe Mallory. Who would campaign for this? If it's approved, how, how would a campaign run?
Not us. Actually, the Hamilton Area Hospitality Association and the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce are going to lead the effort to spread the word.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question. Any other comments or questions or?
Mayor, I'd like to thank both speakers for visiting with us tonight and sharing your observations on what just seems to be a very logical process in today's environment. What happened 50 years ago was perhaps good 50 years ago, but as we've heard, the stall that happened at state level is, is kind of inexplicable right now. So, here we are acting locally, and to be able to be a benefit for our city, our benefit for our visitors and people that want to come here, dine, enjoy, and do things, it just makes sense for Sunday sales in today's environment. So, again, thank you both for sharing.
And it takes care of our caucus agenda. I accept the motion. The committee will be closed. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none. Close at 7:22. I'll accept the motion. The regular meeting will be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven-zero.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion regarding concurrence, recommendations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur with the recommendations.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. I forgot to mention, the regular meeting was reconvened at 7:22. Well, now we go to the public hearing. And I'll accept the mo, the motion. The regular meeting will be recessed, and a public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carried at 7:23. We now go to the public hearing. Please read into the record, Mr. City Clerk.
A public hearing regarding a request to amend the Hamilton zoning ordinance pertaining to Section 2600, Architectural Conservation Historic Districts, Section 4500 Fee Schedule, and to approve an updated version of the Architectural Design Review Board Policies and Guidelines, City of Hamilton applicant.
Okay, anyone in the audience, excuse me, wish to be heard of this public hearing involving zoning, fees, board policies and guidelines? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard of this public hearing involving zoning ordinance, fees, updated versions of board policies and guidelines? Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Let the record reflect that no one did sign the public hearing book for the purposes of speaking at the public hearing. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. It's the way to first and the second. The motion was carried at 7:24. We now go, I'll accept the motion. The regular meeting will be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene a regular meeting.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven-zero.
Time we reconvened was 7:25. We now go to actions pertaining to legislative items. I will accept motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Hearing none. Motion carries at 7:25. We now go to actions pertaining to legislative items. Penning legislation, second reading of emergency ordinance, appropriating easements for the public purpose of Tyler'sville Road widening. Second reading.
An emergency ordinance appropriating a standard highway easement and three temporary easements in certain real estate located at 2881 Tyler'sville Road in Hamilton, Ohio, for the public purpose of Tyler'sville Road widening project. West Rentals Incorporated, property owner, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Orders adopted. Seven-zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number seven, which is a second reading of emergency ordinance involving easements for the public purpose of widening Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance appropriating a standard highway easement and a temporary easement in certain real estate located at 2951 Tyler'sville Road in Hamilton, Ohio, for the public purpose of the Tyler'sville Road widening project. Jerry W. Collins, property owner, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Comments on this one? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Orders adopted. Seven-zero.
We go to agenda item number eight, second reading of emergency ordinance involving our 2021 street resurfacing and concrete repair program.
An emergency ordinance levying special assessments for public improvements in accordance with Resolution Number R 2021-5-21, adopted May 12, 2021, relative to the construction and repair of existing sidewalks and driveway aprons on various streets and avenues in the city of Hamilton, Ohio. Final assessment roll for the 2021 Street Resurfacing and Concrete Repair Program, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion, statements, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Seven-zero.
Go to agenda item number nine, second reading of emergency ordinance involving our 2020 street resurfacing and concrete repair program.
An emergency ordinance levying special assessments for public improvements in accordance with Resolution Number R 2021-2-9, adopted February 24, 2021, relative to the construction and repair of existing sidewalks and driveway aprons on various streets and avenues in the city of Hamilton, Ohio. Final assessment roll for the 2020 Street Resurfacing and Concrete Repair Program, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Seven-zero.
Go to agenda item number 10, second reading of emergency ordinance involving the Corwin Avenue Street Resurfacing and Concrete Repair Program.
An emergency ordinance levying special assessments for public improvements in accordance with Resolution Number R 2021-5-22, adopted May 12, 2021, relative to the construction and repair of existing sidewalks and driveway aprons on various streets and avenues in the city of Hamilton, Ohio. Final assessment roll for the Corwin Avenue Street Resurfacing and Concrete Repair Program, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Seven-zero.
Now, go to new legislation, agenda item number 11, first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of North B Street Alley.
An ordinance vacating a portion of North B Street Alley located between Wayne Avenue Alley and Park Avenue situated in the first ward north side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Then we go to number 12 of the agenda, first reading of an ordinance involving the fee schedule and policies and guidelines.
An ordinance amending the Hamilton zoning ordinance pertaining to Section 2600, Architectural Conservation Historic Districts, and Section 4500 Fee Schedule in approving an updated version of the Architectural Design Review Board Policies and Guidelines, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 13, first reading of emergency ordinance involving our Hamilton Beltline Trail.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent easement located at 208 North B Street for construction of the Hamilton Beltline Trail. DRJ Real Estate Investments LLC, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 14, which is a resolution involving a grant titled Public Health Workforce Project.
A resolution authorizing the application to the Ohio Department of Health, Office of Public Health Practice, new grant titled Public Health Workforce Project WF23, for a total award amount of $435,000 to be used over the period of July 1, 2023, through November 30, 2027, and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Pullman. Any discussion or comments? I want to thank the city folks who worked on this grant. This is a huge grant, which will go a lot of ways in taking care of some of our budget issues. Okay, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven-zero.
Go to agenda item number 15, which is a resolution involving another Department of Health, have a grant.
A resolution authorizing the application to the Ohio Department of Health, Bureau of Infectious Diseases, new grant titled Continuation Funding for COVID-19 Enhanced Operations, EO23, for the total award amount of $75,000 to be used over the period of August 1, 2023, through July 31, 2024, and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven-zero.
Good audience. City Manager. Good audience. The city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. First, I just want to say congratulations again to our public service award winners. I did send them a congratulatory email. The mayor and I will be taking them to lunch, if they want to go to lunch with us, which maybe they don't. But if they do, we'll be taking them to lunch at some point in June. Second, I know council's aware of this, maybe more for the public interest, but we've been working on drafting a revised strategic plan. Liz was up earlier tonight, Liz Hayden, our director of planning, talking about Plan Hamilton, which is our comprehensive plan that certainly has some alignment to a strategic plan, but maybe two slightly different documents. But when I say alignment, if you read through Plan Hamilton, it talks a lot about business, retention and growth, talks about our neighborhoods, as does our strategic plan. But the four broad categories in the draft strategic plan are jobs, neighborhoods, modern infrastructure, and amenities and public spaces sort of lumped together at Mr. Hufford's request. But I know that we have a, I think, a meeting on, or we're working on getting a meeting scheduled with council in June to talk more about some of the real estate components of that plan, but something that should be out for public consumption, hopefully sometime by midsummer. We also wanted to give a quick update on the Schuler-Benninghoffen Building in Lindenwald, since Lindenwald did come up a couple of times tonight. They did receive their Part I approval through the National Park Service, so they are ready to apply for state and federal historic tax credits this fall. I think, as council may recall, but again, for the public, they were going to apply this past spring, and we asked them to delay their application because the Hilton at the former Anthony Wayne Building was also applying at the same time. So the Schuler-Benninghoffen Building graciously stepped back and waited six months to go into the next cycle, which is the fall 2023 cycle. And Beckett Paper wanted to go in the 2023 cycle, but we asked them to step back and go into the spring 2024 cycle, so they weren't competing against each other and possibly knocking each other out. So the Anthony Wayne Hilton Wellhouse Project should find out in the next 30 days or so if they did receive their tax credits. Everything looks very good on that front. Then Schuler-Benninghoffen will be up this fall, and then the Beckett Paper project for the spring. So a lot of very large catalytic projects lining up for the tax credits. And finally, on a more personal note, since today is May 10, and I think this is only my third council meeting in 24 years, which landed on a May 10, but today is my 24th anniversary of local government. I showed up in a U-Haul in Waukees, Iowa on May 10, 1999, pulled out a very wrinkled suit out the back of the U-Haul, and went to a council meeting, and was appointed to my very first government job at the grand wage of $0 an hour. After 40 applications and having a graduate degree, I was offered a job as an unpaid intern, which I took. But anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Congratulations on 24 years of great success. My name's the council. Any board or commission reports? I'll say Memorial Day Parade, Memorial Day Monday. Please consider walking or being part of any kind of a unit in the parade. Laneville Reed, 9:30 or Monument, 10 o'clock parade, 11:15 ceremony at Greenwood Cemetery. There's a Veterans Park Veteran Memorial Wall Committee that's fundraising, raising to add some of the walls there up on that park, because sad to say, there's been more individuals who have passed away since they built that, so yet they had walls to add names. And there's a group working on that. Those are folks who died in Butler County during wartime. And that's basically what I've got for right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I'd like to add, in concert with our Veterans Initiative, two weeks ago, I shared with the audience that on Saturday, May 20, at Armstead Park at the corner of D and Main Street, our veterans banners will be dedicated that day. The banners are going to be starting to be installed along Main Street, corner of B, up to Millville and Eaton, and down B Street to the Spooky Nook complex. We have over 120 banners that are going to be recognized, Army, Navy, Marines and Air Force, and then the local military support groups, and a couple of specialty banners that will be installed. So during the ceremony, from noon until 1 o'clock, and everyone is invited. The public is invited, elected officials have all been invited. We will have dignitaries with us for the event. The letters of thanks have gone out to all of the support businesses that have helped our committee of eight people to bring this to fruition. We expect that once the banners are in place, we'll be able to identify each veteran that has served, back to those families and to their loved ones, be able to tell them where they will find their veteran, where they will find their loved one. There will also be a special ceremony to honor those killed in action that Pat had just shared, the veterans that did not come home. So we're very, very fortunate to have this in our city. Other municipalities throughout the state, nationally, have veterans banners in place, and we were able to pick up on those initiatives and bring that to Hamilton. We know that we will expand this again come November. We will start taking applications again for what we'll call our Class of 24. So please come and join us if you're able. It will be an all-weather event. We hope it's a beautiful day like it was today, but noon until 1 o'clock at the corner of Main and D Street in Hamilton. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Lauer?
We have, we also have a meeting on May, a coffee with council on May 20. I think this is important, as we will be recognizing some of the resources that are offered down in the Riverview neighborhood. We will also be honoring some students in that neighborhood, and I think this is going to be a great kickoff. I think the theme is that we want to start off our summer as we did last year. It was a great summer. It was a safe summer. And I think we want to start it off with some positives for the Riverview neighborhood, and we want to maintain a great, safe summer down in the Riverview neighborhood. The other thing I want to mention is something that goes unrecognized at times. And I wish that we could get the word out there a little bit more. The Fine Arts at Hamilton High School put on an amazing play, The Newsies. And it was, you know, I'm not the guy that does much of that entertainment, but I am telling you, I was much, I was very impressed with the show that went on in Jacob Spandenberg. What an amazing young man he is. I believe he's going to get the ROTC scholarship, $100,000 scholarship. And this, this young man is absolutely amazing. He's on the football team. He plays guitar. He's an actor. And I just think that I'd like to recognize Jacob Spandenberg as he is. He is a shining star in Hamilton City Schools. And if we had 100 of them, man, he's going to, he's going to be a kid that comes back to our city and gives back. So I was very proud of everyone in that show, and it was a great experience.
Council meeting.
Yes, sir.
There you go. We're all going to meet him.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I would just say congratulations to all of our high school graduates. So in the next week or so, Hamilton High School will be graduating, and Baden High School. And then this weekend, we open our doors to Miami University and their graduation. And I know that our hotels will be full and a lot of visitors from all over the country here for graduation. So congratulations to everyone, and hopefully you can all celebrate with your graduates.
Great. Anything else? Do you manage, we're going to go into executive session?
Yes, sir, for two purposes, please. The first is to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans,